Oh, sorry. How you doing?
Good. Hi. Fine. How are you?
Oh, me too. Yeah.
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 We should go on a passing comment before.
Yeah.
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 Oh, man.
But somebody go for it.
You gotta laugh.
That's good.
I have your ready to go.
Bobby.
Bobby.
So, do you wait on people?
Wait on people.
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 I want to call the city council meeting to order for October the 2nd, 2012. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Gray?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Would you join in deciding Republicans' beliefs?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At least we did that, Anderson. The students from Spring International is here. These students are international fellow, Ford Fellows. They're graduate students participating in the program Intensive English Leadership and Social Justice Spring International Language Center at the University of Arkansas. They are from Brazil, Chile, Indonesia, Mexico, Palestine, Peru, Russia, Thailand, and Vietnam. Would y'all please stand and be recognized tonight by the city council? It's wonderful to have you here. I'm sure you will find this most interesting tonight.
(laughing)
Okay, on the consent agenda. Number one, approval of September 18th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor, I think that there one item wants to be pulled.
Oh, okay.
I would like to pull item number three from consent.
Okey doke. Okay. Now, do we need to address that right now?
No, just read everything but it on the consent agenda, then we'll get to it.
And then we'll pick it up right after that.
Yes, sir.
Do not let me forget to do that. All right. Number one, approval of September 18th, 2012, city council meeting minutes. Number two, Calle's Prairie. Resolution naming Lake Fayetteville Prairie Restoration Area, Calle's Prairie, in honor of Calley Hinson, an early pioneer and land owner. Number four, Arkansas Forestry Commission Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant. A resolution authorizing acceptance of an Arkansas Forestry Commission Urban and Community Forestry Program 50/50 matching grant in the amount of $7,500 to provide for construction of parking lot improvements north of the city's Development Services Building and approving a budget adjustment recognizing the revenue. Number five, CDBG Public Facility Program. A resolution to approve a contract with GRR Land Company LLC in the amount of $19,162.37 to use community development block grant funds to rehabilitate a city building at 1932 South Garland for charitable services for Fayetteville citizens. Now, I will accept the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Now, for the item that was pulled, number three, Garver LLC. A resolution approving an amendment to the contract with Garver LLC for additional professional engineering services associated with the extension of Frisco Trail in an additional amount not to exceed $26,500. Matt?
Yes, thank you. Matt Mahalovich, Trails Coordinator. This item is for an amendment with Garver LLC who we've hired to do the design work of the Frisco Trail extension from MLK to Walker Park, a half-mile-long trail. The reason we have to exceed the amount of the original contract is because we had an alignment change which included a new bridge near Ninth Street and South School. It helped to avoid a property owner that were basically coming across their property quite a bit, and this made it more straight shot, a little less impact. So, the good thing is this is also grant-funded for this, and we're still going to be within the amount 216,000 that the grant has provided.
Okay. Sarah?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you. I requested it be pulled because I have had folks request that they have a chance for discussion, so I appreciate you being here and being there, also being able to explain some of it. The, I think the question is about the, specifically in this case, the rerouting and where that goes. I know it's avoiding the property, but where is it crossing? Can you describe that and I think some of the impacts of the property, but also the stream and the best management practices that are being used, and if you might address that?
Sure. Yeah, the actual bridge will be crossing just south of El Camino, as many of you are familiar with the Mexican restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Between that and there's a little garage. There's actually a 30-foot strip of land through there. We're able to cross the creek directly across and span with the bridge to minimize any impact on the stream, and we will comply with the streamside protection ordinance in every way on that, on that bridge crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Matt, it was pointed out to me, and I had not had a chance to walk down there and look at it myself, but you would probably notice that there is already an existing bridge at the end of Church Street, and that there was a concern, why didn't we, why didn't we go through there? Because it does end there at Walker Park. So, the current bridge is probably 10 feet wide or so. Not correct, so maybe you could address that also.
Sure, yes, actually, I, this was brought to my attention. I went out to the site, actually met with some of the property owners. There's a business, well, it's the old, it's a school district building there, just on the, I guess it'd be the west side of the bridge between that and Walker Park that centrally amassed uses for a training facility, and I met with that owner. Basically, to incorporate that trail, we're going to have to take out their parking lot to stay out of the streamside protection zones, and it would really limit their, their business there. It also sends the trail, oh, about over 300 feet, too far to the north to come back to the south, and we're following parallel with the creek during that time. So, it actually is more potential destruction to the repairing zone going parallel with the creek than just cutting right, right across and minimally, you know, putting the bridge in and going straight to Walker Park. So, yeah, I did look at it and tried to weigh all the alternatives in, and still feel like just making that a straight shot is the best.
All right. Mike's fine, thank you. Any other questions from there?
Mayor, I have questions.
Yes.
I also had somebody contact me, and one of the questions was, and I feel like I told them the right thing, was that this is just an amendment to the engineering contract, and that is, the full contract comes forward and things happen, things, other things will become for the council.
Yeah, I guess the next thing will be when we can get the design all together, and we'll be bidding it, competitively bidding this project, so that you'll see it then as well.
They just said there may be some property owners that want to speak, so if they do, they got time to do it, yeah.
Any other questions from there? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment on this. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Please introduce yourself when you come up. The only reason you would, or the only way you can get another turn at the microphone is if an alderperson brings you up and asks you questions, okay? Who would like to be first?
I'm not sure any of the people that are most concerned are here, but the, one area where the bridge goes across, I wouldn't say you would be taking out their parking lot. They would lose four or five spaces if it were built there, speaking of what Mr. Mahalovich spoke about. But it is, I guess it's a public entity, the ambulance service that we support, help support. But anyhow, the route that's to be taken from Ninth Street across the stream will take out not just repairing zone where it crosses, it'll take out a stream that's at the end of Locust Avenue, which is a ditch adjacent to the Advance Auto and the other tire shop that's next to it. And that ditch carries water down to the Spout Spring, I mean, the, yeah, Spout Spring Branch before it, the two of them come together, the branch formerly known as Tim Cup down, known as Spout Spring, and some of you guys remember that change. The, it's a floodway in between those streams, and the house, particularly the house at the very end of Locust, before you get there, that they're, they're going to stay out of his yard by not putting a trail through there. But anything they do there is going to be in the flood plain, because his house is in the flood plain. The water blows around it very close to getting into it every time there's a big rain up here on the hill. It's water that comes down between the two branches. It's water that includes both branches meeting and backing up in there, and then the water from, that goes under Walgreens and comes out there in other little parts. So, those people are all concerned about it regardless of exactly where it goes. And the property owner that Mr. Mahalovich was speaking about is very concerned about his small lot. He's had it for 20-something years. It's not all that valuable right now, but if it loses any of the space that it's able to, accounting screen space or parking lot in this process, it will be very hard for him to sell, because it's one of those places that we said they're grandfathered in when you guys passed the streamside ordinance, but back his building, corner, nobody's going to be able to build that close to the stream again, and I'm glad of that, but it's there and it's harmless. Making people take out things that are harmless, that's not good. But anyway, he won't have much to sell when the time comes. He wants to retire and sell that business, and he's relatively a young man, so it may be quite a few years, but, and I hope the price goes up. But I know we're unable to pay people what they need to get for the use of the right way or even part of their property. So, that's, that's a very important thing to him. He, he said he didn't want to come here. He's talked to a lot of people who've come out there talking about taking the property, getting the property, arranging the deal, what they might pay, but he hasn't talked to you guys. He hasn't talked to the public in general. So, it appears presenting this on his behalf. He is part of my neighborhood and town ranch neighborhood. And the other businesses up where the new tunnel will cross, if it is built, the thing you're authorizing the money, I understand tonight primarily for the planning of that going down there maybe, those property owners, it'll go between two businesses. Small businesses, one of them does screen printing and such for t-shirts. You probably bought church that were printed there or had some done there. The other place sells Razorback gear, right? And in between them is where the tunnel will go. And it will have to start way up behind Greenhouse Grill almost and drop down to slope properly and then come up over in that parking lot. So, they will lose parking. They'll probably lose a lot of the access while the construction is going on, and I'm not sure, you know, we haven't seen a plan that shows exactly how it's going to look, and maybe that's what $26,000 is helping to pay for. But I think it's very important that these people be brought into the discussion. I've been to at least one park board meeting where the, the board went down there and had a meeting. I'm not sure anybody from the public walked over there, because there wasn't a camera along. So, a lot of these things have been shown and talked about, but not on public TV, not on government channel, and as much as I know you all try to get your constituents aware of things, a lot of things just get past the people that are most concerned. So, I appreciate your listening tonight, and I, if anything could happen, it would be that you could notify all those people up and down the street there, so they didn't even know what was going on. And I know the guy in the little repair shop next to the stream, next to the, on the east-west side of Spout Spring Branch, he's got the shop there. He said he didn't know exactly where that was going. He said he understood it was going down the creek somewhere, but the final plan needs to be something he has input in, because if it's on his side of the creek, if there's a bridge put in adjacent to the street or whatever, those folks deserve to know about that, and, and the public needs to have input. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Who else would like to address this tonight on this?
I'm Randy Perry. I believe some of you probably know me. I'm not a resident of Fayetteville, so I can't vote for any of you folks one way or the other, but I do own a business here in town since about 27 years ago. And there's several angles you can take to oppose this location of the trail crossing that I have, and I'll leave it up to y'all to decide which one is more personal to me. But you also have public safety adding another stoplight down on one of the busiest arteries through Fayetteville, State Highway. We already have a stoplight up at Martin Luther King, and that can be widened sidewalks and stopped right, across right there where people are crossing day to day. There has already been a fatality at that intersection by someone on a bicycle that couldn't seem to negotiate a slow-moving trailer truck turning 90 degrees in that intersection. So, we need to be thinking about what we're going to do, putting these people out in front of a busy artery like that. Second consideration, my business. It's got so much parking available to me, and at times I need every ounce of it. So, I have a concern with my property, where I run my business. I have a concern with what I do with it when I choose to retire and pass it on to some other unfortunate soul that would like to make a business there or have a business. I didn't start a business. I bought one that was already there, and thank goodness I'm still there. But my main concern is my own investment in the property, public safety. And then also, the natural concerns about what could happen with the creek and the development along the creek and the process of just construction alone, and then the after-effects then on from all the traffic coming through this area, on people on bicycles and walking whatever, which that's fine in some areas, but you don't always go through places like this, and there are very few that follow it. You're destroying my green space. This is the only green space this property has. You'd be taking half of it. And also, another concern is the process about acquiring property, not just on my experience, because I haven't really got my toe in the water yet, but impressions go a long way from what I hear. I'm not really encouraged from what I've heard in past procedures about acquiring property for public use, especially for commercial property that's us business people look at as an investment. It's a life-long deal. I put my house up twice for this business. First, to buy the business. Second time, to buy the property. I was thinking I was doing the right thing as a business person, which is where I earn my living. I love Fayetteville, and I support a lot of what you guys did, and I know y'all are great people. Thank you for letting me speak.
Could, could I ask you what business, John? I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Parish's Garage. It's the garage in question. It's already been brought up, the shop. The one in question, more or less.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a, I have a question for, maybe, maybe it's Matt, or related to the process, and, and I understand that, you know, this is an extension of that contract really related to getting more input and so on, and extending the, the time it took to do that, which is really important, and I'm wondering, there's, there seems like there's still communication that needs to happen as far as where it is and that when we design the trail, like, related to this, and I'm wondering, is that, is there any chance to continue to work with the different? Is that still ongoing, and, you know, can there be, like, wells that, can we shift it around in the parking lot and get more green space, or how does, can that conversation still happen, and if so, when? And then also, when those contracts come to the council, can we consider it, carefully consider whether or not it goes on consent versus, I guess it can't go on consent, because it would be, I guess it depends on the quantity.
It would have to be unanimous by the city council for it goes on consent, so probably if you, any questions, you won't go on consent.
Okay, so, I guess then that, that's answered. So, that, my first question then is, is there still an opportunity for Mr. Parish to work with you and, and the team to look at location?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a big part of the process. As I already mentioned, the, the co-op area, we've been working with them over, over a year, you know, constantly working with them and making sure, meeting with their engineers, our engineers, making sure it's, you know, the best for everybody, the best possible location that makes the least impact on their businesses. In this, Mr. Parish, a couple occasions now, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay.
And tweak things, and actually, this amendment is, is a result of another business across the street called Mountain Mechanical, and we were going across their, their parking lot originally, and with the streamside protection ordinance, we were so far into their parking lot area that, where they store their materials, and he just, you know, frankly said, look, this is really going to hurt my business, and so we looked at a different route, and that's, that's what we're looking at here. This, this one goes through some grass, and we can possibly look at shifting north a little bit more, working, working through that to make it the best possible.
Thank you.
We'll certainly continue to do that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
I recommend we approve the resolution.
Okay. Brenda, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. Any other? Okay.
I just wanted to clarify one of the points that was raised. When the, when this idea was presented to the street committee, if my memory is correct, there were actually significant improvements to the pedestrian facilities at Martin Luther King Boulevard and School Street, and so I just want to make sure that everybody who's concerned about this understands that this isn't just, this grant doesn't just go towards the trail itself, it also goes towards improving the pedestrian facilities at that intersection.
Any other final comments? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Patty. Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, 92.01, definitions of the animals chapter and 92.35 managed care of feral cats. An ordinance to enact new definitions into 92.01 definition of the animals chapter of Fayetteville Code and enact 92.35 managed care of feral cats. This ordinance left on second reading. I will entertain a motion to go to third and final reading.
So moved.
Have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
No.
Okay.
An ordinance to enact new definitions into section 92.01 definitions of the animal chapter of the Fayetteville Code and to enact section 92.35 managed care of feral cats.
Brenda?
Well, I want to say again, this is something that a lot of people have approached me about in committees I was on about, some way that, that we could deal with feral cats in a humane way, and this is about the only way we could figure out to do it, the way we've defined it in this ordinance. And of course, I, I don't need to repeat everything. I mean, obviously, a colony's got to be identified, it's got to be, have, have a sponsor to, to take it over and do all the things that are provided for in the ordinance. Obviously, there's a lot of cat colonies out there that won't be sponsored, won't be, I mean, it'll be, they'll be treated the same way they are now. In other words, whenever Animal Services has time to go out and pick up the cats or trap a cat, then they are generally taken to the Animal Services and euthanized, because they are, they're not acceptable for adoption. So, this was a humane way of trying to deal with feral cat col, feral cat population. In this way, they would be trapped, neutered, and given vaccinations, and then released under the caretaker's care. So, this is just an option, and that's all we wanted to do was offer an option. A lot of people have, or I've, I've had contact from people that are concerned about the, the feral cat population, that they basically are saying they would rather than be trapped and taken to the Animal Services and euthanized. And we don't really have staff at Animal Services probably to pick up every feral cat in the city. We need help with this, and this was another way of dealing with it. You've got to understand if these cats are, are captured and neutered and then released, they will eventually die off naturally in their colonies, and that's the whole idea of this, is a humane way of dealing with this. But anyway, I mean, this is something that's, I felt like it was an opportunity to offer something, and the only way I could find to do it, so I still stand behind it and support it, and we will just listen to the public again and see how it goes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Alarone and Bender-Brewgrove for bringing this forward. I think that there's been a lot of misconception about how this ordinance would actually work, practically speaking. A lot of the emails I've gotten seem to assume that all feral cats are problem animals, and one of the reasons that I wanted to speak right away on this is because I think we need to make a distinction here. Problem cats still get euthanized, even with this ordinance passed. This isn't a, a, a get-out-of-jail-free car for animals that attack other animals or for that attack people or that are obviously diseased. Those animals still get euthanized. It's the cats that don't have homes, but that are, for lack of a better word, humane themselves, that should be treated humanely. And that's what this is. It's a humane way to deal with humane animals. The problem cats still have to be taken care of. I do want to say that as good as I believe this ordinance is, I don't think anyone believes it's a silver bullet for the problem it's trying to address. Frankly, in order to do that, it means giving funding to it. Our Animal Services Division really does need at least another halftime veterinarian to be able to handle all of the spays and neuters that we should be doing, among other an excuse for problem animals to roam free, that is not correct. Those animals still get euthanized.
Okay. Mark?
I think this is a step in the right direction. And I certainly want it on record that I support the management of feral cat colonies. My concern is there's not enough control in the way that we have this here to guarantee the humane treatment of these animals. I've talked with, I think, probably the foremost organization managing feral cats in the United States, and it's called Alley Cat Allies. And they have seven principles that they utilize whenever they set up programs for feral cat colony management. And I'm afraid what we're doing here with this is stepping into a situation without proper pre-planning. We do not have statistics right now gathered together, presented to me, that show a baseline in which to measure the impact this is going to have in the future. And so I do have a concern with that. We know it's a problem. We know it's a situation. We know that there are people on both sides of it. We have to control the nuisance of these animals because, again, as Matthew said and as Brenda said, we do not want to encourage this nuisance problem and a problem that is real with cats that are not managed. On the other side, we want to be sure that if a cat is trapped, that there is a responsible organization. And we do have in this code, it says that this is not going to be enacted until we have an animal welfare organization willing to sponsor the activity. And what I would like to see, quite honestly, is if an animal welfare organization does sponsor it, that we continue in our code to add some, a standard operating procedure. The thing that most bothered me last time we discussed this here in our chambers was the fact that it's like, well, this is going to be a loosely organized, or loosely defined thing, and we'll handle it as we go along. Well, is it right to go along and expect our Animal Services Division to be putting out fires as we figure out what we're doing? Or is it better to prevent these fires from springing up on the front end? And I know that Animal Service Committee has been looking at this for a very long time. And I know that there are very emotional arguments on either side of the fence here. But my concern is with the language that we have in the current suggested code, that there would be the opportunity for an organization not to have the resources to adequately manage the humane treatment of these animals in the long run. So that's my concern as we go and discuss this further.
Okay. Matthew?
If I might, I'd like to ask, to your point, a question. Is your contention really a matter of process? Would you rather that we enacted officially some process for selecting an organization before passing this, such as an RFP or something similar? But in general, you find the principle of the ordinance and the rest of it to be sound?
I think that if we are going forward and accepting this responsibility as a city, then we have to go forward and accept this responsibility financially, and accept the responsibility humanely, and accept the responsibility with staff support, and accept the responsibility of managing these animals in the most humane way we can as far as trapping and care of the animals. Right now, it's sort of vague. I am going to hand out to City Council the seven elements that are defined by the Alley Cat Allies, and I'll have a copy for the press, too, of what we should be doing in order to appropriately plan as we initiate our program. And I, yeah, my concern, Matthew, is that we do this humanely and that somehow there is not, in some way, that we don't have a danger to domestic cats. And we know that we have the, we know that we have animal control to go out and handle the nuisance. But do we really have the Animal Services staff and the money to finance this? And we say we don't. We're going to depend on another organization. I want to be sure that that organization knows that there has to be a plan. And I do think that that plan should not just go to the Animal Services Director or the Division Director, but this organization, it should be an RFP, and that it should come to City Council, and that we approve it as a City Council so that we have the endorsement of the governing body as we move forward in managing this in the most humane way. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
So a question relating to that. So I guess I would ask a question. I know that the way it's framed right now, an organization would register to manage a cat population. And so, my question is, part of that registration process, could that, could the part of the registration, or maybe it's Justine I asked this to, I'm not sure. Could part of the registration process be outlining your baseline, you know, your methods? And I think that's, it's an interesting point. And I'm wondering if that's, where that is in an existing approach?
Basically, at this point, we wanted to get it passed through City Council. And like Brenda had said before, we did leave it kind of flexible and open to see. We haven't had anybody approach us yet that's shown any interest in doing this. So at this point, you know, if we were to be approached, I think definitely. You know, once we have this set down, once the council feels comfortable with how it's arranged, at that point is when we were going to go in and look at really extensively writing our standard operating procedures, and really being, you know, a lot more careful, a lot more detailed than we got in the ordinance. When we first drafted the ordinance and we sent it to Kit, it was much, much longer. And he really cut it down to size a lot. So we did have a lot of, some of the stuff that has been brought up was in the original draft. Kit just thought to keep in line with the way our city ordinances were all written right, that you wanted to keep it a little bit shorter, a little more succinct.
Well, at first, it was from another city, and the definition page, definitions went on for pages. And in fact, the ordinance was about the same size as our animal, whole animal ordinance. And I figured that was probably overkill. However, there are different ways to look at this. The way I wrote it, this nonprofit would be selected and approved by the Animal Services. And there was a lot of the procedure and policy would have been left up to Animal Services as opposed to the City Council attempting to go through all of the procedures and policies and spell them out in legislation, which you can do, which Congress often does. They write very long and extensive regulations to everything. But I felt like that maybe, rather than going through that process, that you would look at the general process, you would authorize Animal Services to be the one to solicit and then finally approve any nonprofit animal wealth organization using their judgment. But certainly, that's not the only way it can be done. You know, this ordinance could be, you know, many pages longer, if that's what you would prefer. And you could attempt to determine all of the different elements, you know, that might ever come up yourselves, if that's what you want to do. I just thought that maybe it'd work more efficiently if we had Animal Services who work in this all the time, that's especially in their job, be the ones to handle most of these procedural aspects, where you all set the policy of what you might want to try. Now, this is, I think, as Oldman Patty said, this is a not-perfect ordinance. It's not going to be, you know, many of our ordinances adapt and evolve over time when we decide and find out how they work and how they don't work. And then they're brought back to the City Council. But the more in detail you make them, the more often they're going to come back to City Council where we find out that something we thought was a good idea maybe was not a good idea. So that's why it's shorter than the rest of the animal chapter.
Don't go away, though, because...
I'm kidding.
I just want to also add something, and while, you can get back up there because I'm going to... You know, in the Alley Cat Allies, there's mention of hiring or appointing a feral cat coordinator. And I know there's been, you know, mention of spending, well, Matthew brought up, the City Animal Services using some of their resources for this program. And, you know, I think maybe that might be something we'd look at in the future if we see, and we talked about that. If we see an activity with this and see a need, then we could move forward with that idea. But right now, there are so many programs within the Animal Services that have been neglected. And, you know, we're all very excited to see how, you know, how it's going to work out without having to serve all the Washington County animals. So, because there have been a lot of things that have been, I mean, a lot of our donations that people give, regretfully, are used for operations, which is, you know, they should be going toward capital improvements and programs. And so, I think until, you know, we kind of see how this works and see how much, how well we're doing in the next year or so with our change in our animals that we're taking in and everything, I think we just decided to not try to fund this, to not try to add anything in it that would cost the Animal Services money at this time. But, and Kit's already elaborated as to why we didn't leave it as long as it was originally. Because it basically was adopted from the Austin ordinance, which has been pretty successful, I understand, in Austin. But anyway, so that's why we didn't, you know, and certainly didn't put a standard operating procedures all the way through, because that's something that most divisions, departments do within their own division. They don't put all that into an ordinance, so, so anyway.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Justine.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Please introduce yourself when you come to the microphone. And the only way that you can come back to the microphone is if an alderman brings, or alderperson, excuse me, brings you up to ask a question. Okay. Patty?
My name is Patty Besom, and I live at 15 Northwest Avenue. And I have come to speak in favor of protection of birds. Cats are mighty hunters. It doesn't matter if they've been neutered. It doesn't matter if they've been vaccinated. If they're on the loose outside, they're going to be hunting. And they really do a lot of successful hunting of birds. And I've heard a lot of, in the paper and so forth, expressions of sentiment and feelings for protecting the cats. But I would like, hopefully, put this in your minds also. I think the birds need more protection than the cats. I live next door, also want to say, I think, a colony of feral cats that's legitimized is a bad idea. I lived next door to one for two years. During that time, the birds in my backyard were severely decimated, not eliminated, but decimated. The little chipmunk colony down on my stone wall was eliminated by the feral cats. There were only three or four. I don't think they were all feral. This little sanctuary was five blocks from here, my next door to me over on Northwest Avenue. And my neighbor for two years put out food all the time for the wildlife. And it attracted feral cats and cane cats, domestic cats. So you could look out just about any time of day or evening, and there are cats, and they're hunting. Didn't matter how much food they ate, they're out there hunting birds, and they were very successful. And believe me, when one feral cat dies off, another one's going to pop right up. I don't know how you think you can manage a wild population of wild cats that's just a step away from a wild squirrel population. In my mind, they're all problem cats. If they're wild, if they're, I mean, if they're out stalking birds, that's a problem to me. So look at it from that point of view also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Neal, and I live at 145 East Cleaverd here in Fayetteville. And I guess I'm coming in a little bit, pretty late in discussion with the third reading of an ordinance. But the fact that there is no discussion at all about the impact of these cats is pretty amazing to me. There's a huge body of research about the effect of feral cats on native wildlife. And the effects are uniformly negative. And I understand that people, I grew up with cats, and I understand that people feel a tenderness and a discomfort with the idea of killing cats that don't have owners. And I completely appreciate that. But if you write into ordinance the fact that the City of Fayetteville's going to put a stamp of approval on leaving feral cats in the environment as a matter of public policy, what you're also doing is condemning a death. All the, for example, if you put out bird feeders, you're guaranteeing what's going to happen to those birds. You don't, one thing people don't realize about this is that you see the cardinals coming to your bird feeder, and they come every day and they come all year. And you think, well, they're just fine. Nobody's having an impact on them. But you don't have those birds banded, which means you don't know what cardinals are coming to your feeder. But feral cat-bird interactions have been studied very widely, and they take a huge toll on birds. And you would see it, too, if the birds that were coming to your feeder were banded, because what you'd see is the disappearance of those birds. And I live right in the middle of Fayetteville. I don't live even out on the edge. And I watch, from the feeder that's in my front yard, I've watched at least two cats catch birds in midair, just jump up and catch them when they're trying to go to the feeder. And I'm not saying that birds are better than cats, but birds are native wildlife, and we have state laws that protect them. And we have an obligation to try to honor those laws. And writing an ordinance like this, like, basically saying, "We don't have the ability to take care of these animals that don't have any owners, and so we're just going to condemn all the other native wildlife to being preyed on by these animals," to me, it's a bad mark for government in the City of Fayetteville. And it shows not really looking at the broad implications of enacting a policy like this. And I'm old enough to remember in Fayetteville in the 60s, when we had packs of wild dogs and great big packs of cats that roamed the city freely and legally. In fact, I remember walking to class when I was a freshman, across Ole Main, and here came 16 dogs in one pack. And we had, we've come a long ways in Fayetteville in trying to deal with that, trying to be humane and decent and intelligent. This is a real backward step to write into ordinance that it's okay to leave these animals out in the environment. Now, I know that there are economic issues involved here. You're struggling to make budgets work. You're trying to look some way to deal with an obvious problem. But condemning native wildlife to feral cat communities is not good public policy. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Neal? If I may, I know you're a scientist, and so I wanted to ask you specifically this question. I guess in a sense, I want to gently challenge, for my own education, your conclusion about the ordinance. My understanding is that the reason this kind of program, the trap-neuter-release program, is held up as a model is because it reduces the absolute number of feral cats in a community more quickly than a conventional euthanasia program, which in theory should reduce that feral cat's population impact on native wildlife more quickly than a conventional... reduce that feral cat's population impact on native wildlife more quickly than a conventional euthanasia program.
I have only one experience, like, locally, to address that.
Okay.
And I go birding out of Bob Kidd Lake a lot, it's out by Prairie Grove. And there was a feral cat community out there, maybe it's even still out there somewhere, but it was at one of the spots that I stopped and scanned the lake for waterfowl. And those cats did incredible amount of damage along the lakeshore to all kinds of small native birds. And I know they're all decent, my daughter loves her cats, and, you know, and I understand that feeling, and the discomfort with killing animals in a shelter, I understand it completely. But the, but the communities, these cats, the cats aren't declawed, and they're not defanged, which means that even though they've been given shots and neutered, they're still out roaming the same habitats. And there is a lot, there's lots of information about this. And there, and obviously, it's controversial, I've heard several of you mention that, you know, that you've heard both sides of this about whether or not, you know, feral colonies like this actually work. I'm unconvinced about it, because I think they just keep growing. And, and it's a great idea to neuter them, I'm all for that. If people don't want to take care of them themselves, then I think it's a great thing to do that. But I don't think they should be turned loose in the wild. Because in fact, when you put them out in the wild, aldermen, they're going to keep doing the same things that they do. And there isn't any scientific data that supports the idea that these cats are not going to continue to kill native wildlife, because they do. And so, they're just being turned loose for that purpose. And, I mean, not for that purpose, but that's the effect of doing it. And that's the reason people in my business can't support these kinds of activities. I understand, okay.
It's my understanding that you've reviewed the literature, as I have myself, and I also am unconvinced that it reduces the number. The numbers are from 16% to about 35% reduction in a feral cat colony over 10 years, from what I can get. But then there's all sorts of extremes on both sides. Did you review the literature and come up with any specific?
The American Bird Conservancy has really looked at this a lot, because they're a spokesman for the native, you know, for native birds nationally. And there probably is some reduction. I mean, I think if you are satisfied to support an ordinance like this because you think you'll get some reduction in feral cats, I understand that, it's a compromise, as are a lot of things. But everyone that is captured and taken into the clinic and neutered, and then released into the wild, is released as a predator on native wildlife. Every one of them. And that's, even if you reduce some, if they're, if they're caught and they don't have an owner, somebody who'll take care of them, they shouldn't be released back in the wild, unless you personally feel okay with them killing white-throated sparrows and Carolina wrens and northern cardinals. Because that's what you're going to do. If you vote to support that, to capture these animals and then turn them loose again, you're turning them loose on those birds. And other things, like Patty Besom's comment about chipmunks. And somebody needs to be speaking for them too, because they're part of the environment we live in also. So I hope you realize that if you're voting, I know it's a compromise, it's like, a lot of bad choices. But when you, if they're caught by animal welfare or somebody trapping them, to get cats out of their yard, which people do, and then turn them over, and then they're turned loose again, you're turning them loose on the birds in your yard, and all the other wildlife that actually belongs here.
But again, to get back to Matthew's point, trying to reduce, did you, have you run across any numbers in your review of literature that would support the reduction of feral cats? And I don't know, because I, there's a lot out there, and I don't know. From your point of view, did you see that there was a reduction in?
There's a lot of balance in it, and it really depends, as often is the case, on who did what. But in the, from the bird community and ornithological community, the, those, those feral cat colonies don't shrink just because you neuter the cats. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sir, could I ask you, so?
You want me again?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is your solution?
I think if animal control takes, if they, if they are, for example, let me just give you an example. If they capture animals that don't have owners, then I think that they should be humanely killed. And it's not something that I, that I enjoy, because I don't hate cats. But I don't see that there's any option. For me, there's not a real in-between, because I would not turn one loose on the cardinals in my yard. And that's really what's at stake.
Mr. Mayor, could I read one sentence of the ordinance?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. It says that, "Any such feral cat which is running at large within Fayetteville and is a nuisance or problems for neighbors, may be trapped or caught by animal services officers, impounded and dealt with as any other cat or dog while running at large would be handled." The only cats that would be returned to the caretaker are ones the caretaker has caught themselves, taken down to the vet so it can be neutered and vaccinated, and then it is not released to the wild, it is returned to the caretaker for that particular cat colony. If that cat is bothering his birds, and animal services goes out and captures that cat, that's curtains for the cat, sorry. So, I think that exactly what Mr. Neal asked is in the ordinance. If animal services captures the cat, too bad.
All right. Who else would like to speak on this?
Hello, there, I'm Alan Long, I'm chair of the Animal Services Advisory Board Committee, and just wanted to make myself available for any questions we might have. We did actually recommend through the Animal Services Advisory Board Committee for these review of ordinances that this pass. A few things I wanted to point out is, if this does pass, the Animal Services Advisory Board Committee itself would like to review the standard operating procedures for the program itself. I've spoke with the community services director about that today. Also, I've heard that this ordinance creates problems in colonies, but that's not really true. This ordinance allows caretakers and nonprofits to work together to manage the decline of colonies. And also, if these cats are not trapped in a program like this, they will not be trapped. So when you're looking at the bird population, this program actually allows you to address that. Whereas, you know, if we don't do a program similar to this, then they won't be trapped and neutered at all. So, the problem will continue to grow. I've also heard that it releases cats into the wild as a TNR program, trap, neuter, and release, but this is a trap, neuter, and return program. I've heard that a couple times, but I just wanted to be very specific on that point. I think that the most important thing to remember is that this is a sustainable approach that creates a humane solution to an existing problem. Hopefully, in 15 years, the need for the program like this will be much smaller. So, if you have any questions, I'll be here.
I have a question. During the Environmental Action Committee, members asked if the animal advisory committee had discussed the impacts on wildlife during the development of this, and I'm wondering, you can speak to that.
We did. And basically, what I've spoken about is what we discussed, that if they're not trapped in a program like this, then the impact will continue to be the same, the impact will continue to be the same instead of be reduced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Charlene Lacy-Jenkins, and I live at 224 East 13th Street. I don't understand everything that's being said here, I'm not the best educated person out here. But what I do know is, the cats that have lived in my neighborhood and on my property, the feral, the strays, whichever term you prefer, I know that I've been there for six years, and we have a lot of discussion about birds and stuff. But we also need to see the benefits of what these strays or ferals do. Morgan Manor in the outlining area used to have a large problem with mice and snakes. And once the population began to grow and grow of the feral cats, that has been reduced. I don't have any more mice coming in my house, I don't, the neighbors I have talked to don't have any problems. There was one particular stray feral cat, Sarah, that I loved great, I loved that cat. I wasn't able to really touch her or pet her like you do our pets, but she had a great impact on my life. And when she continued having kittens, I went to the, to the animal shelter and I asked them, I said, "Can I bring her in and get her spayed, so we won't continue having this problem?" And they told me that because of the way the laws are now, I would have to put her in my name, be responsible for her, which meant putting her in my house, and I could not do that because of my own pets and my children. But outside the home and in the neighborhood and in my yard, she posed no problems other than continue having kittens. I've seen two dead birds in the six years that I have lived there. My neighbor behind me, he puts out a bird feeder with bird seed, the birds come, the cats don't, don't bother them. You know, obviously, I can't watch the cats the whole time, but I don't work, I'm disabled, I'm there at my house the majority of the time, and I watch these animals in a stadium. You know, what happened to Sarah, I don't want to have happen to another innocent cat. They didn't ask to be born a stray or feral, they didn't ask to be born in a city. And I just think that it's senseless when there could be a program. You know, even Brooklyn, I have a sister-in-law who lives in Brooklyn, they do this, they trap, neuter, and release, and they mark the ears, and that helps. And I completely, you know, from what I understand, the lifetime of a stray or feral cat is about three years. And the only way that I see that more are going to continue popping up is from others that don't take responsibility for their pets, they have kittens, they throw them out on the street. These kittens, if we're, if we're willing to fix these cats, and the kittens that are already available are raised on cat food, that's going to reduce their hunting and destroying of other wildlife. You know, I just don't know what else I can say, but I think that the, based on my experience with Sarah, that this is, there's got to be something done. You know, my, the main joy I get out of life is from those cats, as sad as it may be, but that's what I live for. And I'm going to continue, I'm going to get in trouble, but I'm going to continue doing what I'm going to do. And would y'all rather it be by y'all's guidelines? Or would you have people out there like me that are doing the best we can by not knowing what the guidelines are, what we should and shouldn't be doing? It seems to me that there could be, y'all talk a lot about the finances, what about people, what about setting up a, some type of fund that people can specifically donate to, say, "This is for the TNR program." What about not having a, what about having a training program that somebody that has times on their hands that can go out and help manage and teach people like me what we're supposed to do and not do? You know, I just know, all I know is that the senseless killings got to, got to stop. You know, the, the animal shelter was nice enough to hold Sarah for three days, and they did allow me to say goodbye. But I live with that guilt by taking her up there. Because if I didn't, I was threatened by an ex-worker that he would write as many tickets to me as possible. Well, you know, I got to the point after this experience, I don't care, I'm going to do what I'm going to do, and I'd rather it be by y'all's guidelines than me going, "Okay, what do I do now?" Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
That was very moving. My name's Marsha Donnelly, and, is that better? I live in Fayetteville, and I'm representing, I'm the founder of Spay Arkansas. We have a low-cost spay-neuter clinic in Springdale. We've been spaying and neutering cats and dogs since March of 2011, we've done about 6,000 surgeries so far. And we've done a lot of feral cats, or what I'm starting to think of them as unowned cats, because a lot of them, they're not feral, they're just, they've been dumped. In fact, well, I don't exactly know where to start. I think it's unrealistic, there's probably, as far as numbers are concerned, I got your numbers, got a lot of numbers. There's probably as many unowned cats, estimates are, we've probably read in the Allicad Allies website, that there's as many unowned cats as there are owned cats in any municipality, so that could be like 20,000, say, for Fayetteville. So that's really unrealistic to think that we could pick up and kill 20,000, you know, cats at the cost of over $100 each, that would be a lot of money. So, I think, I mean, if eradication worked as a feral cat management policy, you know, like, how come there's still so many cats? I wanted to share with you, we've, we've, we've sterilized almost an entire colony in a trailer park, we've done 35 or 40 cats. I mean, this is, I don't know if you all know specifically, like, what a feral colony looks like, because I didn't really, but these are cats that people moved off and left, and they weren't spayed, and they had kittens, and, but the people that moved back into the trailer park are concerned, and they like cats, I mean, an amazing number of them really like those cats. And it was like, right on the borderline of getting out of control, you know? Half of those cats were females, and they had five kit, four kittens, whatever, this year, there would have been over 100 cats. But we got them, and they're feeding them, they live under the trailers, you know, they're kind of unowned, but they're not really wild either. So, we managed to do that with money from the Humane Society and Keeley's Fund and some just private donations. And I'm, I'm really, I'm really proud of that. And I hope that we can continue to do that. And I think that that's the only way that really you're going to, that we are going to decrease the number. I mean, trapping and killing has not been a very effective policy, it's been going on for years. So, I think to empower citizens like her, and instead of punishing them and making them mad, to criminalize compassionate citizens like that is just, it's just stupid, it's a waste of a resource, and it's no good for the, it just doesn't serve anybody very well. It's not good for the cats, it's not good for the people. So I think to, you know, build a coalition of concerned citizens, you know, under the aegis of this new policy would be wonderful.
So, you're in favor or against?
I'm, (laugh) I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm here to support it. I am so pleased that it's on the agenda, and that you're considering it.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Marsha. So, from your perspective, and what I'm gauging is there, maybe you can use the example of that colony that you described, that where you sterilized the 30 some in the colony. How did you find out about the colony? And, and I ask that question maybe universally, is, I have the sense that people aren't, people who care about those cats don't come forward because they're afraid they'll, they, that the cat will be euthanized.
Well, they're right. I mean, it's, it's illegal to run free in Fayetteville, and it's illegal to run free in Springdale. And cat, colony feeders are really kind of afraid to poke their head up. I mean, they feed in the middle of the night, because what they're doing is illegal. We, I met that, the man who introduced me to the other people of the trailer park, when he came in, we were running a special on animals under five months, because cats can get pregnant at five months. So he came in and he had like five kittens that he wanted to get fixed. And then we started talking, and he was, you know, there was way more than five kittens was really his problem. And then we just started involving the neighbors and... And then we just started involving the neighbors and, um, now we've got them almost all done. But there's a colony at the other end of the trailer park, but we're going to start working on that. But we've, a lot of people bring in unowned or neighborhood cats, whatever you want to call them, because just like her, they're tired of dealing with the kittens. And the kittens will end up in the shelters, you know, is the other thing. So, I mean, that's, it's over a hundred dollars an animal, every animal that comes in with it, it's euthanized or adopted or whatever, that costs the taxpayers at least that much, you know, so there's, uh, there's less of that as well. In fact, I read just not very long ago, that even though they only live three years, uh, an unsterilized cat, kit, female cat could be responsible for 3,200 kittens in 10 years. And that's, and that's with the attrition that half the kittens are going to die and the cat's only going to live three years and, I mean, each female's only going to live three years. So, I mean, that's what's happening out there and we're, yeah, I mean, we're kind of in the trenches at the clinic because people are bringing in these little sick kittens and like, I don't know what to do with these kittens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Okay, do you have?
Hi, my name's Brandon Schmidt. I live at 1220 Ellis Avenue in Fayetteville here. And one of my concerns is as a gardener, I don't know if these colonies are going to be confined, but if they're not, I constantly deal with the landscape of my house being used as a dumping area for the cats, they pass their waste there. It's horrible to garden in my neighborhood. I live next to a cat porter, he's got multiple cats, he's got a feeding station out there. And if this is the kind of thing you're going to support, it's just going to make a nest for anybody who's in that location or close to this colony. Um, I don't think that that's been looked at. And also the, uh, effect on wildlife needs to look at, be looked at more. And we also need to look at, is it all that humane to let these cats back go? If they're released in a colony, I've read several places on the internet that they also, uh, get preyed on by coyotes, they get hit by cars, they suffer diseases that vaccinations don't cover from, and is that any more humane than what we currently got going? Those were my three points. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to be next?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Jeremy or Justine? Okay, so this is an example, so if Brandon has a complaint about a neighbor who has all these cats, does that refer, does that go back to that line in the ordinance or am I, and, and so then I have a question about leash, leash laws or how, what's being enforced in that way? Because it seems like there's this, there's one, a communication breakdown with the community about the, what's available. And two, um, an opportunity to have this choice, there's no choice to take an or, an animal to get it sterilized without it being kept and euthanized. So there's like, people, I don't know.
How this would change the law, it, it doesn't change a tremendous amount of law. What it does do, if assuming an animal welfare organization would come forward to manage this and assuming a caretaker would register and fulfill the duties of the caretaker, which includes trapping the animal and bringing them in to be spayed and vaccinated and stuff, then that cat would be returned to the caretaker's colony. Now, if this co- colony affected, uh, the man next door and was a nuisance, it's not a get out of free jail, uh, card for any of the cats. So if they're a problem, uh, to someone else, then if Animal Control can catch them, then they're caught and they'll probably be euthanized. Uh, what it, the only thing this does is say to the caretaker that if you follow all the rules, we're not going to arrest you, or not arrest you, we're not going to give you a citation for allowing your cats to, to be at large without the leash. However, if they cause problems when they are without the leash, they will be dealt with like they are right now.
That's correct. And also I think that, um, once we get into it, if we have someone that approaches us that wants to sponsor and they want to identify a colony, I think it's something that we would definitely take into consideration in our standard operating procedures. We may even have, um, we had talked about before, maybe a policy of, you know, within a two to three block radius, you know, having to canvass the neighborhood, letting people know if you're going to be doing it in a neighborhood type setting. Um, a lot of the feral cats that we get calls on often are usually more around businesses, like the mall area is just generally like feral cat, um, heaven over there basically. So we do it a lot in, um, more, you know, business type situation. But if it was to be in a neighborhood, we'd also looked at maybe having restrictions on having feeding stations within so many yards of like a park or where there's a school or where there's kids, things like that. So it's definitely something that I think that we could look at and something we have thought about as far as when we start to develop our standard operating procedures, um, putting guidelines in there for being really responsible about where the colonies that we, um, approve people to manage are located.
Okay, so, so it seems like certainly there needs to be a broad understanding that people can file a complaint as things are and even, no matter what happens with this, you can file a complaint for a, for any nuisance animal.
Right, yes. Dog or cat, feral or not, definitely.
Or wild, I mean, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Again, I think this goes back to my specific concern of coming up with standard operating procedures as we go along. It just seems to be developing more conflict than resolution. I am supportive of this, by the way. I want it to be better defined. That's, that's the, my concern, better defined to protect an established residential area where there are domestic cats like Ms. Phelan last time told us about. I'm sorry to point you out, but I do see you here. Because we do know that that is real and we do know that that is a concern. And we don't want anyone to think that they can just start letting their cats roam. And so that's not what this is and I understand that. So I'm looking forward to some very, uh, earnest discussion by a nonprofit organization to come forward. And also the responsibility, as Alderman Adams said, trapping is a big concern and there's a lot in the literature about humane trapping of feral cats and, uh, the, the responsibility associated with that. And then as our wildlife individuals say, there's a lot in the literature about the impact on wildlife. I know from my point of view where we've had really beautiful gardens and I used to get so mad at my neighbor's cats, some I loved. Actually, I loved all those cats. But was it really fair that we had ground feeders where the does would come and I would lure the, the songbirds into my yard and the neighbor's cats who were domestic cats preyed on them? But they were my neighbors, so I didn't want to really get their cats arrested. It is a tough situation. So we, we must have this understanding that a nuisance is a nuisance and it will be dealt with.
Right.
Just a quick question, right, right now, if a, if an animal service officer is going down the street and he sees a cat and the cat, um, does not, uh, have a collar on, I mean.
Cats can't run at large.
I, I know that, I'm just finished. Well, is the animal services officer going to, going to apprehend, I guess we should call it, a Morris, a Morris collar? They're going to collar him on a Morris collar?
Depends on whether they resist or reassess.
No, I mean, just typically, if they see, if, if a cat's going down the road, there hasn't been a complaint filed.
Right.
But we see one, um, typically would that cat be taken in?
It probably depends on what they're doing. If they're on the way to another call, they're probably not going to stop. Um, the term herding cats, I mean, it's kind of, in fact, right now, it's even written into our ordinance that if a citizen calls and they say they have a stray cat issue, you know, we always tell them if you can contain it in a box or a carrier or even if, if it's friendly, you can pick it up to get in your bathroom, just that way when we pull up and we step out of our vehicles, they don't immediately run away. I mean, that's something that you really deal with a lot with cats. Um, so typically speaking, no, we're probably not going to stop if we see a cat because trying to catch it is, is really a futile effort, it's probably going to take more time to put the, pull over, put the car in park, get out of the car, the cat's probably gone by that point. They're very fast. Um, and you can't lure them with food, but food like you can a dog, they just don't.
There's many of them, that's what I was going to say, usually would be, which goes back to the points that a couple of Oliver have made, if you have a, a complaint from a citizen. But let me ask you one more question. Looking around the country and, and being in the, in the job that you are, dealing with animal services, are there any communities you know of in the country, whether it be dogs or cats, where the spay-neuter return is working and there's some, there's some tangible results?
One of the, um, cities that we did model this on was the city of Beverly Hills, California. In fact, a lot of the language that we used was modeled after theirs and they have shown some really demonstrative success. Um, as the gentleman earlier pointed out, a lot of it does depend on how you approach it, what the study is. I mean, if you're just dealing with one small colony, um, you can really, you know, easily show success. Whereas if you're looking at an entire community, like Mark was wanting, you know, specific baseline figures, really you're just going to have to extrapolate, well, how many feral cats are in our community? And really to do that, you're just going to have to base it off of, you know, how many own cats do we have in our population, that kind of thing. So I think it's one of those things where you're probably going to be able to find studies that are going to say yes and studies that are going to say no. I think that over time though, it has become, you know, more and more prevalent to see studies that say, yes, you are going to see a reduction. And I guess from my position in the field that I'm in, these feral cats are already out there. It's not like we're importing feral cats, um, they're out there. So it's what are we going to do about it? Um, because what we've been doing for the last however many years really isn't working. Um, so we want to see a reduction in the population, the, the tech that we're taking right now is not really giving us the results we want. So like Brenda said, this is more of an avenue to say, well, let's try this in our community and see if it works.
I, I was just thinking, I heard something about some community in Minnesota or somewhere where, where on dogs, that they were out of, I don't know how long it'd been effective, but that their, the pound was out of dogs. Uh, because it, it had been effective, but I understand we're dealing with cats here and, but I would think the same principle in the reproductive cycle would ultimately work. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. May I just respond to the Minnesota thing? Just very quickly, that's a result of, of a community requiring spay and neutering of all their animals, all domestic animals. Which, I mean, I certainly would advocate, but I think there'd be a lot more people in this room if I did so. So, enough of that.
Justine, do we worry about, I mean, whenever I was looking at this, it seemed like in Southern California and Florida and Arizona, these were more temperate climates. Do you think that, again, and I'm looking at the humane treatment of animals in the long run.
Right.
How does that work whenever we have a, we don't have this temper climate? And I couldn't find any examples of that, by the way.
Um, I mean, to me, I guess, is it more humane to continue on the way that we're doing where, you know, we're not doing anything really, whereas at least if we have a caretaker over a colony, um, if we, you know, see the need in the future to maybe start requiring, you know, basic types of housing, you know, maybe it's just a box with straw, you know, somewhere where cats can come in out of the cold because we do have extreme weather here, which I'm just waiting for it to pop up anytime now. Um, so it's definitely something I think we could look at in the future. Uh, I think it's something that's a really good point actually, because a lot of the studies that you look at tend to be on either coast. Um, I know the middle of the country sometimes is a little bit lagging behind on some things in animal welfare that other places are trying. Austin was given as a good example, of course, they're a lot further south than we are too. So, um, I think it's a really good point. I think that's something that definitely probably needs to be looked at. Um, I guess, once again, it just kind of goes back to, we're not doing anything now. Um, it's kind of like your boat is capsizing, but you're bailing it out with the thimbles, kind of where I feel like we're at with feral cats right now. Um, so definitely be something we could look at, y'all.
So do we have to have an ordinance to have a program?
I think you have to have an exception at least for the leash law currently because like Ms. Jenkins was saying earlier, if, um, with this particular cat that she did have, basically, you know, um, it wasn't to where we could adopt it out. I don't know that I would go to say it was totally feral, but it was not a sociable cat to the point you could adopt it out into a home. At that point, if we're going to release it back to somebody, it has to be to somebody that's claiming ownership of it. We can't just set it back loose because it's in contravention of, we'd be violating our own ordinance, which seems really dirty, if animal services is violating city ordinances. So, so, or in order to release a cat like that, we'd have to have someone who's claiming ownership of it. Now, she could have taken it and just released it back around her house, but if it ends up back at our shelter and we know it's her cat, then she's going to be facing fines for having her cat running at large and if it doesn't happen to be up to some vaccinations, you know, fines like that, so.
So you have, um, you have phone calls coming into the shelter and you keep statistics, I think, on what kind of calls are coming in? What, could you give us a guess on how many people call in about what they see as a feral cat problem?
I do know last year-
Is it a big problem that we need an ordinance for?
Um, I think it is, um, I think that there's probably a lot of people out there that don't call, you know, that have issues, that just don't want to bother picking up the phone. I do know last year, we ended up trapping 250 feral cats. Um, and of course, we have three officers, you know, for a city of 76,000 people. We set traps, we, we also, you know, we can't set them if it's going to rain, we can't set it if it's too cold or too hot. Um, there was one point when we had a trap list, because we only have so many traps that we loan out to people in the community. People, of course, are welcome to use their own trap and we will service it. Um, and our page, I mean, it was like pages upon pages of people waiting to get traps, not always for feral cats, sometimes just for other wildlife that was making entry into really close proximity to their home. Um, but it's definitely something that we deal with really commonly. I know my husband, um, when I first started talking about feral cats, because he has no idea about feral cats. And we just moved to Fayetteville and he likes to get up and run at like four o'clock in the morning, which seems obscene to me, but, um, he would go running on the trails and he would come back and he was like, I had no idea what you're talking about, about feral cats, until I went and ran on the trails and he's like, I see at least 10, you know, every morning. Not saying that they're necessarily feral, but they definitely hit the road when they see him. So I think it's definitely an issue that if we don't start addressing it in another way, I'm just afraid that it's going to continue to get bigger and bigger.
So one more question.
Yes.
I'm not a member of PETA.
Yeah.
But I know that they do not, we, we keep hearing the word humane, this is a humane way to deal with this. And I'm still not convinced of that. So an organization like PETA does not support releasing cats into the wild after they've been altered, into the caretaker's control, whatever that means. Can you, can you tell me, I know I asked you this two weeks ago, why you see this as a humane, you alter the cat, nick its ear, you take it back out, you turn it loose, do you believe through all the research that you've done, that that cat then, because it's neutered, has a better life, doesn't have kittens, I understand that? But what, what, what is the, what, tell me what the word humane means here. PETA doesn't say it is and they are all about humane treatment of animals.
Right.
Why do we think it is when, when organizations like that don't?
Um, well, I would like to say that the Humane Society of the United States and the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals do support a TNR program. Um, to me, I think I've read studies that show that once you have altered an animal, it really lowers the stress level in their life because they're not out there competing for mates, they're not out there trying to protect their young from other predators, that kind of thing. Um, so studies have shown that it really can reduce the amount of stress in the cat's life, um, which then makes them, you know, lead a, a longer, happier life because they're not out there driven to, um, defend their territory quite as much, they become less territorial and they, that, I'm sure y'all have heard mating cats before, it's a really awful sound, I think. So, um, eliminating that drive in a cat does really reduce their stress level, um, to make their lives better. And you do have a caretaker looking over them. So if one is to get hit by a car, maybe they notice it limping, you know, then they can pull it out, it's not going to die a long painful death, at least it's something that they can trap it, get it in and we can euthanize it in an expeditious and humane way. Um, same thing if it gets, you know, a cut that gets infected, that kind of thing, they're not just malingering out there for ages, they're being monitored so you can pull them out and, um, deal with them in a better, you know, more efficient way.
Justin, do you have a question?
Well, it's more of, I guess it's a question at this point. Um, I don't know if there's a representative of PETA here, I don't think there is. So I think I'm going to ask Ron to then. Um, you mentioned that PETA doesn't endorse this particular thing. So my question would be, what do they think is better? Capturing and killing them? Do they think that's better? I mean, I'm really asking.
I'm not a member and I was just doing research and getting some help from people and research and, um...
I mean, I guess I can look at that too, I'm just thinking, is it better to-
I don't know.
-trap and kill the animal on the occasion that you can catch them? Or is it better to, uh, keep them from reproducing and then letting them live out their life?
Yeah.
Everybody just, okay.
Well, but you do know that, that both the Humane Society of the United States and the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals- Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals both endorse this?
I do. I just wanted to ask about, I mean, there's one-
PETA, there's one organization that doesn't, and I would ask the same question as Justin does. Why do they not?
That's what I asked. I don't know.
I actually don't know, I don't put a lot of stock, and I hope God doesn't strike me down, I don't put a lot of stock in what PETA says. So, I mean, when we did our research, it really, they weren't a group that really factored into, so I don't know, and I, I mean, it's a good question. I think they may very well think it is more humane to trap them in their lives humanely by euthanasia, which, of course, there's a million people out there that would say that's awful, so, I mean, there's two sides to everything, definitely.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address us from the public? Come on up, Terri.
I wanted to give everyone else an opportunity, since I was up here two weeks ago. So I am Terri Phelan, I live in Fayetteville, I live on North Maxwell Street, I spoke two weeks ago against this, I am still against this, as you should all know from the emails and the information that I've sent to every one of you. So just for the record, let me, let me say one more time that I am a cat person, I love cats, I prefer cats to other animals and most people, but I oppose this ordinance, I think it is poorly thought out, I don't think it's gonna accomplish anything. So where do I begin? Your vote should not be solely about lowering euthanasia rates, there's, I think you need to consider how roaming cats affect the domestic pet population as well as the native wildlife population. I am for spaying and neutering, I am not for roaming. The problem is roaming, I don't care if you call them feral, I don't care if you tag them as owned or unowned, the problem is roaming. The return to the caretakers, I mean, the caretakers are gonna let them run, I mean, that's what the whole point of the ordinance that excludes them from the leash laws, it's roaming. Roaming is my, is my issue, and cats that do roam, whether you wanna call them feral or other domestics, with the, let's say for the sake of this discussion, that owned cats, domesticated cats, have responsible owners and are up on their vaccinations and so on and so forth, and are healthier than the feral population. So then, the feral cats are going to come into my backyard, and my cats do not roam, I am a responsible owner, I have my backyard fenced, I've had four different cats at that location, and not a single one of them has had an interest in getting outside the backyard. My problem is roaming cats jumping in to the backyard, and they are a real cost, they inflict a real cost to me and my pets, and that equals injury, disease, and death, okay? The, and those, the injuries, I mean, they bite wounds, abscesses, infection, transfer and transfer of disease, and that's a fact, that's not speculation, and some of those diseases are, the contagious diseases are fatal, and they're hard to, you know, hard to control, especially when you have roaming animals. The, two weeks ago, when I cited that University of Illinois study, you know, within that, it said that two of the leading causes of cat deaths were other cats and disease, and the vaccination of pet cats does not eliminate the threat of disease transfer from ferals. I still maintain that this proposed ordinance could turn Fayetteville into a dumping destination, which at best perpetuates colonies, and at worst increases the population, and that this ordinance does nothing, repeat, nothing, to clearly and definitively eliminate the existing population. And I think we have the existing population problem, because there has not been, or let me rephrase that, because the current approach is complaint-driven, it is not focused and targeted at the, at the, at the feral population. So that's why it continues to exist, it's not really being sufficiently addressed. I still have not heard any definitive proof that the TNR method actually eliminates the feral cat population. So then, do we really need this ordinance, especially when you have people who are already caretakers in a sense, unknown and illegal, and, you know, if they don't like the way the ordinance is written, or if they don't wanna go to the trouble, they're still, they're still gonna, they're still gonna feed animals and have 20, 30, a dozen, whatever, running around, so it goes, in my mind, it goes back to the issue of this ordinance doesn't accomplish anything, and that what really would accomplish something is to put resources into some other areas, which I'll mention at the end. To, the, and the other thing that bothers me about this ordinance, I don't see that it clearly prohibits colonies from being sanctioned in neighborhoods where roaming cats are or have been a problem, and my neighborhood is one, and to go back to the roaming, you know, the fact that they're spayed, neutered, and returned to the caretaker, who then lets them roam free at will, again, that University of Illinois study that tracked owned and unowned cats documented that one cat's territory was as much as 1,351 acres, acres, for one cat. And the fact that they're not restrained and not contained is a very sore point with me. This ordinance, as best I can tell, is simply a Band-Aid approach, it only puts out brush fires, and it does nothing that provides a thoughtful, proven, effective, long-term solution that eliminates the roaming cat population. I would feel, I could 100% endorse it if, if, if they were not roaming, the roaming, the roaming is the problem for me. And again, I think the existing problem we have, a continuing existing problem, because Animal Services approach, because they're, I think they're understaffed and underfunded, has been complaint-driven, and there has not been any focused, consistent effort directed at trapping and reducing the feral cat population. And euthanasia is humane. You go, I challenge you to have a discussion with your own vets. I mean, euthanasia is humane. The, I think the ordinance, just, the only thing it clearly accomplishes, in my mind, is allowing the leash laws to be circumvented, to make some people feel good about themselves and believe that they're making a difference, when in reality they're not, and that it helps advocates for this appear concerned without providing real, long-term solutions or leaderships. The, and the whole thing about, in the ordinance, and I've read the ordinance, about the caretaker trapping the cats and spaying and neutering, and then I think maybe trapping again for, you know, the rabies vaccinations and such. Cats are, cats are gonna learn to avoid traps, especially when they're, they have a regular food supply, because the whole point about trapping is you put a food supply there that they're interested in, and the, I just, I just don't, I just think that's gonna make it harder for cats that are a nuisance, or, well, for, when a resident makes a complaint that a nuisance animal exists, and Animal Services tries to trap it, I think this ordinance is, the whole trapping issue, it's just, it's just gonna make it harder, I think, to trap the nuisance animals, especially when they have a regular food source. And, you know, this, this, the, let me get back on track, give me a second, and I'm getting close to being done. Two weeks ago, when, when the Animal Services veterinarian in answer to one of the council questions about tests, I think that the question may have been about feline leukemia and feline AIDS tests, I'm not sure, I think the answer was like one in thousands. I know of a clinic that keeps records on that feline leukemia and feline AIDS tests, and they've had six, and of the ones they've tested, they've had 6% positives in the last 12 months, so that seems to be a little bit higher frequency than of disease in the population that can transfer back and forth between domestics and ferals than what the Animal Services vet mentioned. The Councilman Farrell had made a comment two weeks ago that math doesn't lie, and when the math equation is not an accurate representation of the problem, then yes, math does lie, and it distorts the truth. There is more variables here than, it's not a simple A minus B equals reduced cat, roaming cat, feral cat population. I would ask you to vote based on fact and evidence, not on warm fuzzy feelings that haven't been backed by any sound definitive studies, and otherwise, this ordinance is just gonna make it worse for those of us who do play by the rules, in my opinion. And I think the efforts and resources should be focused on expanding the current spay and neuter program and getting owners to participate, and enforce the leash laws, which applies to cats and dogs both. Fayetteville, it's on the books that roaming animals are not allowed, and that, that should, that should be enforced. I play by the rules, I have cats, the cats don't roam, it is possible to keep cats from roaming. I've had four, and they don't do it, though I have two now. And consider the costs of injury and harm to the domesticated pet cats and the responsible owners. And I sent, again, for the public record, I sent all of you this attachment, and it, as far as the wildlife, to repeat some of the things that Joe Neal mentioned, just a couple of highlights, it says, and this is from the Wildlife Society, it's titled, "The Ecology: Ecological Impacts of Feral Cats." Studies have shown that even when fed daily by humans, cats continue to hunt wildlife. 2009 study estimated the number of birds killed by, number of birds killed by cats every year in the United States at 1 billion conservatively. Researchers observed that native bird diversity dropped as cat abundance increased. Free-ranging cats between January and November of 1990 found that four urban cats killed an average of 26 native vertebrates, that's not just birds, while a single rural cat killed 83. And that was conservative, because that only accounted for the prey that was returned to the home and not eaten or left outside. So the numbers of cat-caused mortalities in the wildlife population, it says here, are difficult, given the secrecy with which most cats hunt. And also, cats are a competition with wildlife, which means basically that the domestic cat has an overwhelming, and it says, domestic cat also meaning whether it's owned or unowned, either one, it has an overwhelming competitive advantage, because humans subsidize their populations by supplying food, water, and shelter, allowing cat populations to reach densities 100 times higher than those of their native counterparts, and that affects the native species populations. And I'd like to reiterate what Joe Neal mentioned about state laws and native wildlife. Two last things in closing. Feral cat colonies may serve as a reservoir for disease threatening the health of cats and local wildlife. When allowed to roam freely outside of the home, have severe and varied negative impacts on native ecosystems. Roaming is a problem, irresponsible people are a problem. This ordinance, I think, doesn't do anything other than what I've already said, to make some people feel good about themselves, it's not a long-term solution to the problem. If you, get someone to nominate some land, get someone, you know, have a fundraiser, get the societies, animal societies involved in fundraisers, put on a fence, hotwire the top, put them out there so they don't roam after you spay and neuter them. But roaming is a problem, and I think that as far as the aspects of the ordinance that still maintains that nuisance cats can be trapped, well, you know, I had an issue in my neighborhood where I had to make a formal complaint, I had a couple of conversations, it got me nowhere, I had to make a formal complaint against a neighbor, which I didn't like having to be, having to do, I was backed into a corner to do it, but given the fact that there were five different cats coming over into my backyard, I didn't have a whole mu, you know, much of a choice. And fortunately, you know, and I went on record, and I'm not bashful about that, someone else who's in that similar situation, that formally goes on record, I mean, they, I don't know, I mean, it would be that person's own personality, whether they would wanna do that or not, because, I mean, you don't know, who wants to start a feud with your neighbor, you know? Who knows what that could turn into? And I think that this, that for people who don't wanna do that, you know, they just might do something worse than what euthanasia would be to an animal. It might be, they might be backed in that corner to do that, and when you allow cats to roam, sometimes people, if they don't believe they're getting any help from the city agencies, will take matters into their own hand, whether that is legal or not. It happens, I'm sure. Questions?
Thank you, Terri. Who else? Okay, I will bring it back to the council. What would you all like to do?
I'd like to vote.
I have something to say.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be able to support this, but I'm going to say that I appreciate all the comments so very much, and I have a cat and I love her, and she's a spade, and every animal I have is. I have a problem with ordinance creep in general, I don't know if that's a term or not, I just made it up, but I don't want to support more laws when I feel like we have existing problems with what we have, and I'm not sure we're taking good care of this. Another thing that I'm bothered by is, we have, I've been visiting with the Word4 neighbor about a homeless problem, people problem. So these are cats, they're homeless, and it's very sad and it's very emotional. We don't let homeless people come live in our backyards or on our property and care for them. I don't know why we've gotten so emotional about a cat issue. I do think we should take care of animals, and I love them and all of that, but this thing has a lot of holes in it, it has a lot of, we're depending on some organization that we haven't even met yet, who hasn't even come forward, we don't have statistics to back up. I don't know why we would create another ordinance right now without more details and more information, and I think we have some other bigger, bigger problems that we need to be addressing and not creating. I do appreciate the hard work, and if it passes, I'll support it certainly as a Fayetteville citizen, and believe we did the best that we could for our city, because I know I serve on a council with very smart people, but I'm bothered by this in so many ways that I'm not gonna be able to, and I've had a lot of input from Word4 citizens, I've asked a lot of input, I've done a lot of research, so just wanna tell you thank you for all your work on it, and that's how I'm going to have to deal with this. And that's how I'm going to have to deal with this.
Okay. Who else?
Well, all due respect, I'm not sure, uh, the homeless analogy is the best analogy. Any person who wants to invite some other person into their home is certainly free to do so under current law. Churches do it all the time. We have full organizations set up to do that. But to the point, uh, I'm an equal opportunity animal lover. I've kept corn snakes, tarantulas, rats, cats, dogs. You know, I, I guess I have a soft spot, but I'm not really sure the soft spot matters in this decision for me. And I'm not really sure that economics matter in this, in this decision for me. Certainly, the fact that this program ultimately would cost less is icing. It makes it easier for me to make my decision. But for me, that's not really, uh, the, the, the deciding factor. For me, what is the deciding factor is that we have a feral cat problem. That's a fact. Current policies are not adequate. That is a fact. We could throw money at an eradication policy, but the amount of money that it would take to throw at it to make it work, wouldn't have my support, nor do I think anyone else's support, because it would be so much money. I think that's a fact. And so for me, it says, there is a brush fire, let's put it out. Or at least put some water on it. And that's what this does. There was a study just a few months ago where they put wireless cameras on cats to see how much wildlife they killed. And, uh, one of the most interesting takeaways from that study for me was that, uh, only between 25 and 33% of the kills by the cats were ever noticed by the owners. Whether they're owned or unowned, or wild and unsociable, or however you wanna define it. Uh, so cats have an impact on wildlife, whether they're owned or not owned. But if feral cats are a problem, and the precedent in other communities shows that a trap-neuter-return program like this can reduce those colonies in absolute numbers, then that reduces the impact that they have on the community, on our gardens, on wildlife, no matter what metric you're using. If you reduce the number of cats out there, you're reducing those impacts. Short of a cat concentration camp, or a cat gas chamber, I'm not sure what addresses that problem, other than this program. So I feel like it's in the community's best interest to support it.
Sure.
So I wanna really point out that I too have great concerns for the amount of wildlife that are, that is impacted. And, and this is a, a difficult decision, um, because it is a difficult issue. We don't have, um, that's what I mean, it seems like the system needs work in general. Uh, one, the fact is that we have a roaming cat problem and we have, um, too many of them roaming around. We also have not, people aren't filing complaints, or it's difficult to trap them, or there's an issue with that. And that's not, maybe, maybe needs some work. And then also, if they are caring for them, people aren't coming forward to talk about it, or get help, or spay and neuter. And so those, uh, Marcia mentioned this, so those colonies, they're like black market colonies. They're in hiding and they're not communicating and getting help, because they care about the issues. I think it was Ms. Charlene that, that mentioned that. It's like people are afraid to come forward because people care about these, that's the reality. People care about the cats in these colonies, so they don't bring them to the shelter to get taken care of. So I, I framed this last time, uh, like this, and I'll say it again. The ordinance, the existing ordinance doesn't change and we need to enforce it. We, the existing ordinance doesn't change and we need to enforce it because of the impacts on wildlife and other domestic cats. And there needs to be a way to get at these colonies that are not being managed and, um, that aren't being taken care of and that aren't being reduced. They're growing exponentially. And so this, to me, is a way to, one, provide a, a, an option for a very managed, and I agree with Mark, there needs to be, um, a, some clear, um, in the registration process, very clear expectations of this. And I would venture to say that it, that, that we may not have very many of these the way it's even currently written, but it's going to be someone who really was invested and really cares and is gonna take the time to trap these, the, the cats that they care about and take them to the shelter and give them neuter. And I believe that that's something that you were mentioning. So that's, to me, this idea that it provides a path to have, in this, in this realm where numbers are exponentially increasing, where complaints aren't being filed, where cats are not being trapped in and taken to shelter and euthanized, we have to minimize those numbers, because this is a major problem in our community. So this is one way. Will it be widely adopted? Without, I don't, I, I don't know. I, I think that there may, there's some interest, there may even be some organizations here that are interested in that, but I, I hope that it works. I hope that some, that people will feel like, okay, then I have these cats, I want to have them eventually go away, eventually minimized, but I, I'm, but I, but if not, I'm just gonna keep them going. I'm just gonna keep feeding them. And so this creates a, a way to do that, but again, the existing ordinance doesn't go away and we need to enforce it, because there is a, a, an issue that, that is, um, this is a problem. And so I will support this because of the, the way that it, it has, it provides an opportunity to begin to minimize the number of roaming cats where people are kinda protecting them and, uh, coming forward.
Bob?
Mayor, you know, I, I'm glad that we live in a community where, where our citizens like animals or fauna or flora and everything else. We're, we're really fortunate and we, although it may not be what everybody wants, I think that we allocate resources to try and do a, a good job and, and a humane job. Most of the comments that I hear tonight are from, you know, people that have, they're usually on, they're either on one side of the issue or another. And I understand that. I, I, in my, in my family, we, we don't have a cat right now, but we have, but we, we rescue dogs and, and, uh, watch the red birds, feed them, watch them every day eat. There's, there's a, a person in our neighborhood who has three cats. I'm not gonna mention, because these cats, you see them around the yard once in a while, but they don't come around our feeder. I, I really heard no empirical evidence on either side of this, one way or the other, except I would advance that whenever you decrease the multiplier, that the product diminishes. I believe we can all agree on that as a rule of, that, that's an empirical known fact. Despite however you wanna qualify it or tweak it, at the end of the day, that's a fact. And I think that, you know, we are, we're making our best stab at this, taking our best shot, thinking that we're going in the right direction by trying to start out and make it better than it is. And at the end of the day, hope will have less of a problem for everybody and for the animals. And Mayor, I will support this.
Okay. Who else? Okay. Uh, if there's not any final comments, Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
No.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
No.
Passes.
Sixty-two. Okay. Thank you all. All right, moving right along. Under unfinished business. Okay. All right, number two. Two thousand and twelve millage levy. An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the year 2012. Fixing the rate thereof at 1.3 mills for general fund operations, 0.4 mills for the fireman's pension and relief fund, 0.4 mills for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and 1.0 mill for, for Fayetteville Public Library and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading. Sondra? We have a motion, second, to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
And ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the year 2012. Fixing the rate thereof at 1.3 mills for the general fund operation, four tenths of a mill for the fireman's pension and relief fund, four tenths of a mill for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and one mill for the Fayetteville Public Library and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is pretty straightforward. Mayor is requesting we continue the same millage rate, uh, as we had last year. This is not an increase. This is continuing the same rate. And, uh, with that, we are in hopes to, uh, come forward with balanced budget this year for the general fund. And so we're asking this be continued.
Questions for Paul? Anybody? Okay. Any public comment on this? Let's see, now I'll bring it back to the council. And so.
Maybe we pass the resolution, Mayor.
No, we gotta have a third reading.
Maybe go to the second.
Third. We have a motion and a second to go to the third and the final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams? Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the year 2012. Fixing the rate thereof at 1.3 mills for the general fund operations, four tenths of a mill for the fireman's pension and relief fund, four tenths of a mill for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and one mill for the Fayetteville Public Library, and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas. Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Does the council want a break before we go into new business? Okey-dokey. All right. Under new business, number one. Bid number 12 dash 60, advanced tire incorporated. Resolution toward bid number 12 dash 60 to advanced pi, tire incorporated for the purchase of four solid tire and wheel assemblies for the solid waste wheel loader in the total amount of $21,100.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
In your absence, um, the other day when I was at the, uh, agenda, that, that, it was the cost of those tires were like 19,000 something and with tax, it came in over 20,000. That's why I asked to be pulled off consent and just put it under new business. Now I see no problem with it and would, uh, maybe we pass the resolution.
Second.
Well, 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 we're gonna take some public comment here. Is anyone interested in talking about tires tonight? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. We have a, yeah, where's Aubrey?
Mayor, just, uh, as an informational item for the staff since, um, Alderman Farrell pulled this, uh, these tires have a life of four years. The reason we're replacing these tires at this point is because when we purchased the new front loader for the transfer station floor, when the city took over those operations from Cherokee Nation, we purchased a, um, used front loader that had used tires because of the deal that we got, which is why we're having to replace them now, because we're used, we're through the period of that. Uh, it was done through a bidded process and this is the lowest bid that the city received.
Okay.
No question.
Okay.
What do we do with the old tires?
Just roll them into the river, right?
Uh, Councilwoman Lewis, I don't know the answer to that. I can find out and email you.
Okay, thank you.
Do they go, they don't go to Boston solid, Boston mountains? Solid waste, they have time.
I truly don't wanna speak on something I don't know, so I'll find out for you. My guess is that we would typically do, as we encourage citizens to do, is that they would have to, we would have to pay for disposal through the solid waste district, um, if there's not a reuse for them, but I don't know in this particular situation.
Notice the boy on the farm, they used to cut him to make little flower things out of him, remember that?
Flower bed.
Very swinging.
Flower beds.
Sandbox.
Said they were flower beds, anyway.
For the cats. Seriously, thank you for finding out.
I will find out.
Sandboxes.
Okay. All right. Is there any other stirring comments on this? Seeing, seeing none, Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty? Tannet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, number two, bid 97.086, vending and pedaling. An ordinance to bid 97.086 vending and pedaling of the Code of Federal to expand the number of days per week that the farmer's market can operate at botanical gardens. Kit? Whereas the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommends that the farmer's market be allowed to expand their hours of operation at the botanical gardens of the Ozarks, if approved by this organization, from Sundays only to Sundays, Saturdays, and one weekday. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Section 97.086, vending and pedaling subsection B exemptions, by repealing the last sentence of subsection B and enacting a replacement sentence as follows. The farmer's market and its members may sell items allowed pursuant to Section 114.02C of the Fayetteville Code on Sundays, Saturdays, and one weekday within a portion of the Lake Fayetteville Park that is licensed to the Botanical Garden Society of the Ozarks, if approved by the society, as shown on Exhibit 8. Okay. Connie?
Good evening, Connie Edmiston, Director of Parks and Recreation. The farmer's marker, market is requesting to expand the days that they have it at, at Lake Fayetteville Park, particularly at the, um, Botanical Gardens of the Ozark. This went before our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and they consented to it. It also went before the Botanical Gardens Board of Directors and Executive Director and they also agreed it. So we'll bring it forward to you. If this is approved, it would, um, it, it would be required to modify their conditional use permit with the planning office. So this is the step we need to go first, to know if you all would allow them to peddle and vend out at Lake Fayetteville. But, um, tonight we have Ron Cox, who is here from the Botanical Gardens, uh, if you have any questions. And, um, Lori Boatright, who's a member of the Board of Directors for the Farmer's Market, is here to make the request.
Hi, Lori Boatright, Fayetteville Farmer's Market. And, um, we would like to be able to operate the Botanical Gardens Saturdays, Sundays, and an additional evening market is what we're looking at right now. Here for questions.
What questions do we have? Anybody got any questions? Okay, second.
Did that market just get an award?
It did, um, well, the downtown market won America's Favorite Farmer's Market for large market. Botanical Garden won third in small markets.
That's what I thought, okay.
Which we currently operate on Sundays and have since 2010. So this is our third year there, there. And it's a really nice market and we look to grow it and serve the clientele in that part of town.
Thank you.
And Bobby?
What's the evening hours going to be?
Four P.M. to seven P.M. is what we're looking at right now.
Anything else from the council? Okay. Thank you, Lori. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
Second.
No, no, I mean, I can't do that. I'm just entertaining.
Oh.
I said so moved.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch it. Forgive me. Sorry. We have, thank you for pointing that. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. And Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section ninety-seven point oh eight six vending and pedaling of the code of Fayetteville to expand the number of days per week that the farmer's market can operate at the Botanical Gardens.
Since we've got the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section ninety-seven point oh eight six vending and pedaling of the code of Fayetteville to expand the number of days per week that the farmer's market can operate at the Botanical Gardens.
I just want to say again that we are an internationally competitive farmer's market in our city, and this, yeah, this is a big deal, so I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. I recognize for it.
Farmer's market's a big, big deal.
It is.
It's the best.
Living in East Fayetteville, I'm thrilled that that's going to grow over there. I think it's, I don't think it's going to water anything down. I don't think, I think spreading it out and growing it is a good thing, so thank you very much. Look forward to it very much over there.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. There's not any final comments. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, number three, REO Holdings One LLC. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with REO Holdings One LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the construction of an eight-inch water main near Bridgewater Lane. Kit?
Whereas REO Holdings One LLC, as condition of a lot split approval, is required to extend one thousand feet of two-inch water line from Bridgewater Lane to serve each of the split lots. And whereas upsizing the extended water line to eight, to an eight-inch water main would be a benefit to the city by furthering the eight-inch grid in the area and creating the potential for a future loop to the south and east of the affected area. And whereas entering into a cost share agreement with REO Holdings One LLC for the difference in costs related to upsizing the required water line extension is the most cost-effective way to add capacity to the city's water system in this area. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines the above stated facts constitute an exceptional situation in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a cost share agreement with REO Holdings One LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the construction of approximately one thousand feet of eight-inch water main near Bridgewater Lane.
Chris?
Well, I think the ordinance covers it pretty well, all the points that I was going to make, but just to reiterate, this is outside the city limits currently. It is in the planning area, it is in our water service area, so it does provide opportunity for future looping and capacity in that area. Answer any questions?
No question.
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of, it says not to proceed with the proposed construction unless and proposed contractual agreement is approved by the city council, which is this right here.
You got it.
But my question is, I really don't want the city, the public's tax dollars to go towards building something when then the one, the efforts coming towards that connection go bankrupt, and then we've spent that money. Because we don't know, I mean, hopefully that won't happen, but ideally, that won't happen. But in the event that that development doesn't happen, I don't want us to have pipes to nowhere.
I understand. Yeah, this is a lot split, so there are two lots being created. But it is part of a lot split, so houses or structures could be built on the property or maybe several years before there is something built.
But the upsizing is not for those two lots. They could be adequately served by a two-inch main. It is for the future expansion of our water system for other land around there. And it'll also possibly create a loop, which is always preferable, as you know, so that if there's a problem, it balances it out and provides water much better. So I think it's really not for this development. It is for future development.
We've been trying to upgrade areas when we have the chance.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chris? What public discussion do we have on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Maybe we should turn the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with REO Holdings One LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the construction of an eight-inch water main near Bridgewater Lane.
Maybe we spend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with REO Holdings One LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the construction of an eight-inch water main near Bridgewater Lane.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I'm not sure I understand the city's benefit here. I understand that upsizing the line would increase capacity for a future development within the planning area. But isn't it the case that were that development to occur, they would have to pay for that upsizing at that time if we didn't do this now?
If additional development occurred beyond this line, and this line would be extended?
Well, so city attorney just said the two-inch line is all that's required for the lot split. And so the eight, the upsizing is to benefit somebody, a development down pipe, a future development down pipe. So if we rejected this today, isn't it the case that that future development would have to pay for this upsizing, not the city?
If there were a future development off the end of this line, and they wanted to extend the line, and they needed more water, that is a potential. The two-inch line that's being, that's required to provide for these houses is adequate for, you know, for residential service, et cetera. The eight-inch line provides for fire protection and provides much higher flow for additional subdivisions. I understand what you're asking. I think the, the difference here is, again, is that the fire flow requirement. Normally, we require a minimum eight-inch line throughout the city, and that's for fire flow in most cases. The two-inch line would be adequate for a lot more lots, a lot more houses than just the two that are being proposed with this lot split. So I think to answer the question, you'd have to, have to see what kind of development that we're talking about and what the capacity needs would be, and then we would look at what the requirements are for the water line. So it may or may not ever need an additional, additional capacity.
So if, we're totally within our power. If we were to turn this down today and a future development were to be proposed, the city is totally within its power to say, we're requiring you to provide an eight-inch line for fire flow, and we are, as a city, under no obligation to pay for it. As a developer of that future development, you have to pay for that.
Well, because it's outside the city limits, we do not provide fire protection outside the city limits, so we don't require the fire flow. It's generally two-inch lines that are required as part of those type of developments.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah?
So I guess along the same lines, it's also, and also related to what I was asking, is if, if this is just for the lot split, then there wouldn't be a cost share. Right? The cost share is for helping pay for the bigger pipe.
The cost share would be our portion above what the two-inch line is that they have to put in themselves. And it's, so it's much, much more effective from a cost point of view, if you look at our entire system, to upgrade now rather than wait in the future. I really wish we had someone besides city engineering being here because neither one of us are experts on exactly what that situation is out there. It's been recommended by our water and sewer department that this is a good expenditure for our water system. We do not, we're not required to provide fire flow to the county. And I don't think we could require them to build a main that would require fire flow like we can here within the city where we do provide fire protection. I wish I knew more about this, but I don't.
We can hold it right here if you want to for two weeks.
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Yep.
I'd just say that when you're, I used to work for a utility, and when we would decide where to take the capital expenditures, you had base rate areas, and sometimes they were, ran along the city limits, sometimes they didn't. But if you, if you knew that growth is going to occur, and if somebody here can point out to me where it's going to be cheaper down the road for us to expand our water system, that ain't going to happen. Believe me, it ain't going to happen. It's, so if we're going to do it for fire suppression and for that line, I don't mind waiting, but I'm just going to tell you, it's never going to be cheaper than it is today. So that's one of the, that's one of the thoughts, processes that comes about, I'm sure, with Chris. And if David Jurgens recommended, our water and sewer director, that's what the thought process is. It's going to come. Plus, it's, we're getting some help on this, and the cost of doing things today is going to be less than it is in the future. Thank you.
So.
We're just talking about home in two weeks.
Right. So I would like to add a philosophical approach as well. That if, as a community, we can use our, use our water and sewer as a way to determine where development happens. And, and the best way to do that is to invest in existing facilities and existing infrastructure rather than going out further. So we have lines internally in, in the city that we really need to invest in. And so I hesitate when we invest outward. So, and let other, let others determine where our city grows. As, as a community, we need to have those conversations together. That's.
Just one last point, Mayor. I would say one could argue that, but when one deals with, and I think for practical purposes, we do do that, Sarah.
Yep.
But when you, when you, when you're charged with realizing that we may want to divert our capital resources towards where we want it to go, where we want always isn't what happens. And so you've got to, you've got to look at the whole thing when you're talking about allocation of capital. That's it.
I should know, it won't be two weeks. It'll be actually Thursday after the election is when the next meeting will be. And so it'll be, but anyway, sixteen days, so it's a little over two weeks. And we do need a motion to table because it's on the third reading, so we can't just leave it.
Second. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to be real brief.
There's one more meeting, isn't there, on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Hold it. I'm a little ahead of myself. No, it will be two weeks, sorry.
You're running hard for Thanksgiving, aren't you?
To be, to be very brief. Yeah, I want to kind of strike a middle ground. Historically, I've always been very adamant about using our decisions to drive the direction of growth. But all that aside, I think following Farrell's point, which I agree with completely, I think the only reason I'm asking these questions is I want to draw a distinction between public and private investment. And anytime we have an opportunity to grow our infrastructure through private investment, is, that's the direction philosophically I think we should take. And that's all my question is about. Maybe by holding it two weeks, we can get a more direct answer to that point. Because, you know, I think if growth is going to happen out there, and we can find a way to make private investment pay for it, that's how we ought to do it.
Okay. We're going to table it then. Well, do we have to table it for two weeks, Kit? All right, I need a motion to table. If you're going to table.
So moved.
All right, a motion and second table it for two weeks. All right? Okay, okay. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Okay, number four. Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of forty-one thousand seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for the construction of an extra-wide sidewalk to accommodate the future trail extension. Kit?
Whereas Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated, on behalf of G and C Family LLC, is in the process of improving property located at twenty-five eighteen West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, including remodeling the building, adding a new driveway with parking and removing the existing driveway near Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. And whereas part of the city required improvements include construction of two-hundred-and-forty-one feet of sidewalk, five feet wide. However, the location of the new sidewalk is also on the Fayetteville Alternative Transportation Trails Master Plan as a section of the Shiloh Trail, which will extend from Garland Avenue to Cato Springs Road along the west side of I-540. And whereas due to the topography and limited space at the site, it is critically important to incorporate extra-wide sidewalks of twelve feet wide to accommodate the future Shiloh Trail at the same time as the current improvements are undertaken. And whereas a cost share agreement whereby the city pays the difference in costs between the city required five-foot wide sidewalk and the desired twelve-foot wide sidewalk to accommodate Shiloh Trail is the most cost-efficient way. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one. At the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines the above stated facts constitute an exceptional situation in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a cost share agreement with Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of forty-one thousand seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for the construction of approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-six feet of sidewalk, twelve feet wide, to accommodate the future Shiloh Trail.
Okay.
Yes, this, this item is pretty similar to the last one.
It is a cost share with the developer. The requirement of the development is to construct about 240 feet of five-foot wide sidewalk. That represents the frontage on their site. That particular sidewalk, the location of it, is also on the master trail plan. So the proposal here is to go ahead and construct the sidewalk instead of five feet wide, construct it 12 feet wide, and continue it all the way down to Martin Luther King Boulevard. Because of the site conditions and how tight it is and some of the grade issues, it's a lot more cost-effective to go ahead and build this now and go ahead and get the sidewalk taken care of. And that piece of the sidewalk for the future trail will be in place.
Okay. What questions do we have in the council on this? Okay. Any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
We suspend the rules and go to the second reading, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $41,072.69 for the construction of extra-wide sidewalk to accommodate a future trail extension.
Louie, suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a cost share agreement with Neil Hefner Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $41,072.69 for the construction of extra-wide sidewalk to accommodate a future trail extension.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Okay, number five. Vacation 12-4198, 5439 Maywood Drive, Fort Wayne. An ordinance approving Vacation 12-4198 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located 5439 Maywood Drive to vacate a portion of a utility easement, a total of 477 square feet.
Whereas the City Council has authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. At the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following described utility easement as shown in Exhibit B attached. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the condition of approval and shall not be in effect until that condition is met, that any relocation of existing utilities shall be at the owner or developer's expense.
Good evening. I'm Alan Reed. I'm here tonight representing Dr. So Wynn. He lives with the property at 5439 Maywood. Actually, I don't think he lives there. I think he lives in Fort Smith now, but he still owns the property. And it became apparent during a survey of his property that his house had encroached into the utility easement slash building setback. And so he went through the process of the planning board and got it this far along. And now he's here asking that that portion which is only encroached upon by his house be vacated. And I don't believe there were any... There might have been a water line in there, but there was no problem with the water line. Water department checked it out. So he's just asking that the city vacate that portion of the footprint of the house that's encroaching into that easement.
500 square feet. 477.
477 square feet, yes.
Okay. Counsel?
Louie, suspend the rules and go to the next reading, Mayor.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this?
I have a question. But we can go to the second reading and then ask.
Okay. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 12-4198 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located at 5439 Maywood Drive to vacate a portion of a utility easement, a total of 477 square feet.
Go ahead, Sarah.
For Jeremy. So can you... How does... How does this happen?
The planning area. The property is actually not in the city limits. It's in the Fayetteville planning area, which is Washington County. Washington County does not require building permits or inspections. And so if you're desiring to construct a house in a subdivision, even though we may have reviewed it and we provide water service because it's within our service area, there are no permits to be issued or inspection. So if someone has a contractor, they purchase the plans, build a house. This normally only comes up in the planning area if someone does a survey and realizes that there is an encroachment. In this particular case, we are only really given the rights to vacate the easement that we hold rights to, which is for water service. There is no sewer service in this particular area. So that's really where we have the ability to vacate that portion of the easement.
And my question is, and I guess what happens if you don't? I mean, if we only have that... I mean, is that a right of... It's not really a right-of-way.
No, it's just the easement that was granted. And, you know, all utility companies, including the city's water utility, had to sign off before they could get this far.
That's correct.
They had to say they don't need that portion. But what it is, is a cloud on the title. I'm sure it was found because it was surveyed when it was going to be sold. And that's when they found the problem. And so that would be a cloud on the title if it was not vacated by the City Council.
I might just add also that Maywood Drive is wider than a normal right-of-way you'd find in the city. It's a 70-foot right-of-way versus a normal 50-foot right-of-way. So you have this 35 feet on his side of the center line, which is designated as public street right-of-way, which can be used for street and utility purposes, plus an additional 25-foot utility easement on top of that. So there's really a lot of room out there. And I think the Water Department themselves said that even if we needed to put another line through here, we had more than enough room to do so. The other utilities that service the area all service in the rear of the lot. And they don't even use the front utility easement at all.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 12-4198 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located at 5439 Maywood Drive to vacate a portion of utility easement, a total of 477 square feet.
Any final comments from the council?
Just that I would advocate for a process in the county where there's a building permit process so that people know this and that citizens don't have to do this to have their household. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, number six. Vacation 12-4199, 2864 North Prince William Drive, Cooper. An ordinance approving Vacation 12-4199 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located at 2864 North Prince William Drive to vacate a portion of utility easement, a total of 9.26 square feet.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. At the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following described utility easements shown in Exhibit B attached. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to a condition of approval and shall not be in effect until that condition is met, any relocation of existing utilities shall be at the owner or developer's expense.
Again, I'm Alan Reed representing John, not Dr., but John Cooper, the property of 2864 Prince William. Like the last one, it's a situation where the house, during the survey, it was found to be inside... The corner of the garage was located inside the 25-foot utility easement and building setback along Prince William Drive. Substantially less of an encroachment than the last time. I think we have nine and a quarter square feet, which is just basically the corner of the roof overhang of the garage. But yet, as the attorney mentioned before, it shows up on a title policy. They'd like to have the exception removed from their title policy. So by vacating that portion of the easement, they would then be in conformity with city ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Reed? Okay. Any comments from the public? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Louie, suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Suspend the rules and go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 12-4199 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located at 2864 North Prince William Drive to vacate a portion of utility easement, a total of less than 10 square feet.
Move, we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
An ordinance approving VAC 12-4199 submitted by Alan Reed and Associates for property located at 2864 North Prince William Drive to vacate a portion of a utility easement, a total of about nine and a quarter square feet.
Any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number seven. Vacation 12-4205, 21st Amendment Dixon Street. An ordinance approving Vacation 12-4205 submitted by John Starnes, AIA, for property located at 404 and 406 West Dixon Street to vacate a landscape easement, a total of 0.10 acres. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted sidewalk easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following described sidewalk easement as shown in Exhibit B attached. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the condition of approval and shall not be in effect until that condition is met. The vacated sidewalk easement shall be dedicated to the City of Fayetteville as a right-of-way by separate document.
Jeremy?
These easements were acquired back in September 2001 as part of the DDA for Dixon Street and Dixon project. The city actually paid $14,000 for them. Likely it's part of a federal funding as part of that project in order to improve the sidewalks and provide amenities along Dixon Street. And we actually had to purchase a lot of properties along there, basically to the face of the building to allow us to build those sidewalks and then maintain them in perpetuity. This is about 264 square feet of that original easement that we acquired. What the applicant's proposing to do is to build a structure over top of that easement. And based on the language of the easement document, is not allow any structures to be built within that easement. So what the proposal is to do and for you all to approve is to vacate that easement, so that easement document would basically go away, but to rededicate it as right-of-way. So we have the exact same rights as we had before, but it would allow for a structure to be built over that in keeping with our building codes. So we felt that this was the best solution for this particular problem in order for them to move forward. This is in front of the 21st Amendment. And I think there was an image there, just very conceptual of what they would like to do. Provide a rooftop sort of sitting area over that, seating area over the sidewalk. I think I mentioned also at agenda session that the building codes determine the spacing of columns, how far they have to be from the curb, how much spacing for ADA clearance and sidewalk clearance is required. And normally those go in that furniture zone where trees and street lamps and those things are located anyway. So that looks conceptually like what they're doing. And so we would ensure that that conformed to our building codes.
What questions do we have in the council? Okay.
I'm John Starnes, the architect on the project. And we have the owner, Zach Wooden, here, just available for comment.
I think it'll be okay.
Louie, suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We gotta go by the rules here, Bobby. Is there any public comment on this? Okay. Now we're going to suspend the rules.
I believe in going by the rules. I thought you'd already done that.
No, I have not.
I also believe in the rules.
You can ask a question. I do have a question, even though we've already... Is this what we did down at Hog House? Did we do... The city do the same thing back when that was done? Is that the same sort of plan?
I'm not sure if we had to vacate an easement and get right-of-way. It's very likely that there's a right-of-way underneath that balcony. But they had to follow the same building codes, so it would have been the same construction procedures.
So any restaurant could do this? People on Center Street could do this?
True.
Anybody could request this, sort of?
Could request it, yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think the Hog House might have actually been already constructed before we did DDEP.
Before DDEP, I think so, too.
We talked about this a little bit, on Center Street.
The one in front of Tim's Pizza was probably the most recent one that we've seen. The balcony that kind of overhangs there that you walk under.
Great idea.
The one in front of Tim's Pizza out here on the square.
Is Qudova another one that you said? It's up there in the...
Yes.
Well, let me go back there all the time for my motion code, second reading.
Yes, sir, if it's in order.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
An ordinance approving VAC 12-4205 submitted by John Starnes for property located at 404 and 406 West Dixon Street An ordinance approving VAC twelve dash forty-two oh five submitted by John Starnes for property located at four oh four and four oh six West Dixon Street to vacate a landscape easement, a total of a tenth of an acre.
Okay. Now, what discussion, what, Sarah, do you want to discuss?
I think I asked my question already. I'm good.
Are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Okay.
I'm, 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 second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second.
Who made that motion?
There you go, there you go. We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please, oh, yes, Sandra, would you please call her up?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC twelve dash forty-two oh five submitted by John Starnes for property located at four oh four and four oh six West Dixon Street to vacate a landscape easement, a total of a tenth of an acre.
Okay.
I just want, one question.
Sure.
Are you going to put vegetation up there on the roof, on the patio?
I'm unsure as kind of exactly what we're going to do at this point, if things really preliminary.
Here comes the owner.
He's got it.
I don't know if you've been up there yet, but we're going to put a deck upstairs.
Yep.
And we kind of put just some big plaque and plants and stuff, but that's kind of beautiful. Continue with that look right in front.
Okay.
Actually, I actually thought about having a city council through there, but I thought people in the public might think that was a strange idea for us. But my only, my only, my only comment is to, to you is, in, in all my life living here, I've never seen Dixon Street as alive and, and growing as it is right now, and it's because of owners like you that are willing to invest in their business and, and partner with the city, and I really appreciate it that you're here.
Thank you for supporting.
You bet.
We really do feel that the city's going well.
It's going well.
We really do.
Okay. Is there any other, is there any other final comments? Okay. Sandra, would you please call her up?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, you're done, you're good. All right. That's fast, wasn't it?
After you sat there for two hours.
Yeah, after you sat there for two and a half hours. Do we have any announcements to add? Bobby?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. You know, we, in our meeting tonight, we, we went through quite a bit, and we, we had one kind of, one ordinance that we had quite a bit of input on and everything, but what I'd like to point out is that we expeditiously and in a very nice manner handled everything before us. And I've been on this council almost eight years, and it hasn't always been that way. So this meetings like tonight, I will always remember, and it was just, it was a good meeting. It was a very good meeting, and I appreciate it.
I would, what other announcements?
Mayor, we've got several announcements for you and the public. First, Thursday, October the fourth, at five PM at the Yvonne Richardson Community Center, there will be a reception to welcome our new director, recently hired Tanisha Gist. I hope that the council will go have a chance to, to meet Tanisha. We're excited about her joining the team. Saturday, October the sixth, starting at seven AM, will be our second bulky waste cleanup. The locations for this particular cleanup are located in the old Ward one, which are